An opportunity for us to explore, which is why I've asked them to come and do a presentation with a partnership with Citrus County Schools and Camp Inihasi. So, I will tell you, Ms. Humbah, Mrs. Crowell, and myself met with them and had some conversation. After some of the conversation, we had some questions that we needed answered, so then we went down. They invited us to come to Camp Inihasi and had a chance to tour the facility and then have additional conversation with them. We are planning a conference call tomorrow, Mrs. Crowell, myself, and Ms. Boyd Taylor, with Pinellas County Schools on how the partnership had worked with their school board as we kind of move forward. But today's kind of to share with you what their goals and purposes are related to the partnership that they would like to embark on with Citrus County Schools. So, I'm going to turn it over to Keith Phillipsen, and he is going to steer the commission.
I definitely wanted to thank the board for allowing us the opportunity to present Camp Inihasi, a longtime partner here in Citrus County. And we have with us presenting, my position is the National Director of Education. With Eckerd, I oversee all educational services that we provide in all the different areas that we operate in 20 states. We're also in the District of Columbia. And Joel Smith is the Director of Camp Inihasi here locally. And Gail Wyers, our Education Minister, and put into a principal for our program. And that's us.
Okay, I'm going to, just to start, we're going to, we're going to give you a very high-level overview of camp. So, we've been in Citrus County for 50 years. And we also, just on a side from your other discussions, we are, our official name is Eckerd Connects now, but we are, we also oversee a prevention program within your middle schools that is substance abuse and bullying, all high five, but we're in all of your middle schools as a prevention program. So, just on a side, that goes back. But, again, we are, our organization, Eckerd Connects, was founded in 1969 by Jack and Ruth Eckerd, which I'm sure many of you remember, the Eckerd Drug School of Stores, Ruth Eckerd Hall, Eckerd College. So, Inihasi, it opened in 1969, we're the most established and trusted outdoor therapeutic school in the southeast, and we've served over 12,000 girls since our inception. That's just a little bit about Inihasi. But our organization, Keith kind of already ran over that, we're one of the largest nonprofit organizations in the United States. And right now, we've expanded our services from early head start, which is baby zero, to workforce, which is, you know, finding 50 and 60-year-old jobs. And then we're nationally accredited on the Council on Accreditation, COA, and the Southern Association of Colleges. So, Keith is just going to go, and we can skip some of these for a bit of time. Yeah, let me just go through, we're just going to very briefly tell you about nine, sort of overdue camps, sorry, nine of our major services at Inihasi. Most of you know it as a residential treatment program for girls ages 12 to 18. So, our therapeutic services. Oh, keep going. Therapeutic services. Oh, yeah, we keep hitting them. Okay, that, we just put this one on, sorry, we're out in the woods, so, we started with this one because that, I just wanted to make a point to you that most of, that's our, the basis of our program, it's 840 acres, and it's a wilderness program. And it's girls and youth counselors in a campsite, and that the, our first and foremost premise is the relationship between the child and the adult. Our second category is social and emotional services, which I believe most of you all know, that most of our girls' past experiences have resulted in an inability for them to manage their emotions or build positive relationships. So, that's a core of what we do, is social and emotional growth. Our experiential services, because we're wilderness, our school systems, our school program's a little bit different. We have formal and informal education, but a bulk of our education is based on experiential education. And so, there's just a few, you know, we're rope, we're working on the ropes course, we're building tents, we're going on new trips, and through that, those vehicles, education takes place. But we also have formal education services where Gail is our principal.
We're six through, grades six through 12. All our teachers are certified in the state of Florida. And we're standard-based and through a thematic approach.
We have formal and informal mental health and substance abuse services. We are licensed as an inpatient outpatient substance abuse program. We're also licensed through the Department of Children and Families as a child caring agency. We're accredited through COA in both the wilderness component and mental health and substance abuse. So, we, again, we use a lot of our experiential activities as a modality for addressing the mental health and substance abuse issues of the girls. Of course, there's a family component, we understand the relationship between the girls and the family, and even if it's on, maybe the goal is adoption, maybe it's reunification, or just strengthening family skills. Our healthcare services are provided on-site, both immediate healthcare issues, taking care of past healthcare issues, and healthcare education. Community service, a big part of our program is to give back to the community, so we have numerous activities around Citrus County that we are heavily involved in. And of course, our transition services, which preparing for transition begins at intake, and the girls are usually there on an average of nine to 12 months. And again, we're 365 days a year. So, we got always want, and we might have some questions, but the reason we're here, oh, let me just go over some outcomes, just real quick. These are just, we've shown you the last few years worth of our gains, our reading gains, our math gains, social skills gains, mental health gains, and aftercare well-being. So, the, what's nice about us is we have, we don't have to send them back, you know? So, we have them all day, every day for nine to 12 months. So, our impact can be, well, yours is more challenging than ours because we have them as a captive audience, so have some significant gains. And Keith, I don't know if you want to talk about some school recognition?
So, I just want to go back to a minute, because one of the slides to me was important, that we have been continuously accredited by Southern Association of Colleges and Schools since 1978. And in 2007, we were the first private provider to actually do district accreditation, so all of the Eckerd schools go under that umbrella. And now, we're under corporate accreditation, we changed the district. And we do understand, and I think that would be important for you, that we're very compliant, we're very outcome-driven, so we do understand how FTE works, we understand all the nuances that you guys have to face on a regular basis. So, we're very versed in public school, we've been doing it with Pinellas County since 1992. Our audits have always been good, we've had all-clear FTE audits. And then, the last one I wanted to bring to your attention is the school recognition award, that this particular school has, for the last three years, earned per performance the school recognition dollars for maintaining quality. And I don't...
Yeah, and that's really, that's just our end, but that's why, and I'm sure that you all have presented to them why we're here today, is that since 92, we have been under, we have been partnered with Pinellas County. That's been our, our overall umbrella school. So, while they're still our students, it's our principal, our teachers, that has been our umbrella, because Eckerd had so many programs. Which just recently, we have shifted some of our program models, and so it didn't make sense for Pinellas, because we're the only one now that is a residential program, and so it didn't make sense for Pinellas to continue with us under their umbrella. Because we run about 30 students typically at any given day, and so then we got together with members of your staff to see then if the partnership now can be with Citrus County. Just, but just, we had several other programs that were close by, and so for Pinellas to have all of us under their umbrella makes sense. But now that it's just us, the travel and the distance was a little bit further, it's further for our teachers to participate in some of their activities. So, I think that is, the question was before, not today, but we just wanted to present to you to then work, you know, seeing if we can do for working on a partnership with Citrus County.
Yeah, it's not for you to throw it on today, but if you had any questions that you would have from the group that's here.
Okay, when I went out to the camp, I guess two years ago, the girls graduate from Pinellas County Schools.
Right.
And so, you're asking to join the Citrus County School District, and your girls would graduate from Citrus County Schools. Is that the gist of it?
Yes.
Okay. Because we weren't informed.
Yeah, that's just it.
All, all the students would be the students. Mr., Dr. Hebert's been working with it.
Right, basically, when the girls would come, and some, we have, when we went to visit, there were some students, actually from, I believe, Crista Rice School, I recall, was there, but they get students from all over. So, what would happen is when those students enroll, those students then become part of Citrus County Schools students. So, we're talking about 30 girls. Mrs. Crowell did review the data from the school, and we, from our indication, we saw no issue. That's why we thought, okay, this is something we can continue to explore, because if we saw some concerns about how it might impact us negatively, we probably wouldn't have even been here today. But we felt like we wanted you all to kind of get a sense of who they were, they're looking to do a partnership, and then we're going to begin to work kind of the next steps, kind of get into the weeds of, of what that would look like, contract, MOU, I'm not sure what, you know, when I speak to Mr. Bradshaw, how that's going to work.
Have these girls appointed to the school by court?
No, ma'am.
How would they?
We used to be a juvenile justice program, but no, we are, we are...
I remember that. I was raising Saint Pete.
Right, right. No, currently, we're, our, we have three distinct funding sources. One would certainly be still serve foster care youth. Our second funding source is privately paid youth. And our third funding source is community youth through a substance abuse grant, federal dollars that we're able to serve about 10 kids, girls, that aren't, aren't in the juvenile justice system or are not in the foster care system. They're the girls you all were talking about earlier in your previous passionate discussion.
So, they're no longer, or as you don't have to be paid, and so, it's no longer a level program, we're totally away from that. So, I take it maybe, you know, as far as issues with girls not staying in the program, probably pretty successful getting them to complete the program when they come into program.
Yes, pretty successful.
Okay. And, you know, I've been out there for spaghetti dinners and ask you, you know, I'll establish, and, you know, I think you guys have been great community partners here in Citrus County, and, but having said spaghetti and seeing how hungry I am right now.
You have to say food.
If you enter into an agreement with us, would there be other services like food, or anything other than just education services come into play?
No, this is K-12.
How many adults do you have hired here?
Yeah, it's about 40, 40 staff.
40, that's about.
Or 40 employees.
And how would they interact with the school system, they're the attending classes at Citrus High?
No, these are our, we'll do our own stuff, but you will be able to provide, just through working with, you know, if you have a staff training that we might find, district, and vice versa, we can do, you know, some...
There's transportation. We're self-aiding, yeah, not food service, no transportation. And yeah, and you'd be, yeah, you'd be help-hearted as well, just not being a cost.
Now, you said K-12, where now it's just middle school and high school?
Yeah, I meant, I'm just in the system.
Okay, 612.
Yeah, 612.
Okay.
So, FTE, how does that work? Are you, is there a percentage of the FDFP that they're receiving then as part of this?
No, because we would, we would, what we're currently doing with Pinellas, what we're recommending to Dr. Hebert is to follow the same, we collect the FTE as a cost center in your district, and then we would give you 10% of that for operating for Dr. Hebert's time, for kids' time, and yeah.
Right. And that's what I figured, it was something along, I'm just trying to understand when...
So, it's straight FTE with a 10% allocation to the district.
But your, your teachers would still be your employees?
Correct.
And that's what I'm saying, so you're...
We don't mingle staff or, yeah.
So, staff wouldn't come through our payroll in that particular regard right now?
But we would offer the professional development opportunities we have with our staff.
Partnership, yeah. If they have to go through a due process, does that come through us as well then at that point?
No.
It does not?
What kind of insurance do you have for your, for your staff?
What do we have? Yeah, Eckerd maintains a corporate umbrella policy.
Mr. Bradshaw would have to look at all those details.
And that's all.
I was just thinking, it just changed, I was like, what is that?
I think it's man.
Really, just so you know, the piece, when we were first talking with them, and we got a little, like, when I first saw them, I got a little overwhelmed, because I'm thinking, camp 365, spend of the night, I don't know, and then when we really got into the weeds and really started talking, it was really, we're just really working, partnering for the education piece. The rest of it is not really us, we're just saying, how can we basically partner with them with the, helping support the education of the girls?
I know it's not a completely perfect comparison, but Cypress Creek, the detention, detention facility where we provide educational services is similar, because they're not our employees, they do get a portion of the FTE, and we then, you know, they, they have opportunities to be there, but like, all of the other hours of the day have nothing to do with the school district. So, that's, there's, I can see where there's similarities in that regard. You have multiple masters, you have, it sounds like, and the burden is really with you guys on, on those types of things.
I remember years ago, I used to be on the board of Inihasi, and I remember years ago, there were students who went to Citrus High School for some, I can't remember for what. Yes, and we, we have, we have a transition home, we just, right now, we don't have any students in it, but our, a transition home is basically a group home that for our students, some of our students who didn't have any place to go after they completed the program, yes, they lived in our house, and then, yes, they worked in the community or went to school in the community. So, that may come up, it's just not where we're at right now, but that may come up in the future. And then they would be, okay, then they're, they're your students, Citrus County Schools.
So, there's residential, they're home, they're residential.
And then standards are all in flux now, but, but your, your kids take all the state tests, and just as if they were in our classrooms.
And that, that would be the guidance with Mrs. Crowell's Department of Research and Accountability to help support making sure that all the test security, all the protocols and processes actually occur the way they're supposed to.
And that's all in flux right now, too.
Yes, it is.
Now, you all have the E-Halkey program, right?
Yes.
So, is that still, is that still around? So, that was, that was one time of male, of boys programs.
That was the first program.
Are there any boys programs out there now that Eckerd has?
No.
Oh, no, that's girls, Doug.
No, we have really moved a little bit more towards community-based services and services.
Programs you know of for boys surrounding?
I was thinking of earlier, but you got them.
Yeah, but they're not in Florida. I mean, we, we get a lot of boy calls, too, and there's, North Carolina's got some great programs that are very similar, but...
We've got Forest Sheriff's.
Forest Sheriff's, right, that is, right.
There are two of us, one in line, one in the front.
But we have, we're in a conversation back, and we need to maybe raise out your, ours are neat out there.
So, is the Eckerd family, there's still some Eckerd children that run the foundation?
Yeah, they're on the board, we have them pretty active on the board.
Okay. They're still there in Holland?
Yep.
Dr. Hebert, when do you plan on bringing this in?
Well, Ms. Humbah and Ms. Crowell and I, like I said, we have a conference call tomorrow, so once we do that, then we're going to get the hold of Mr. Bradshaw and begin preliminary stages. So, it'll be coming to the board forthcoming. The goal would be by June, July first. Our contract with Pinellas County Schools ends June 30th, so we'd like to have something in place, obviously, prior to them signing, and we'll be set for it. So, we do operate year-round, but we don't, there, as you know, is not, there's not any FTE over the summer for non-DJJ students. But we do like to offer credit, so the timing is important, because we at least like to, you know, we don't get funding for it, we still like to offer the girls an opportunity to go to work at some summer school. So, and that would be, because that's the takeaway, you know, there's something beginning to unfold, so I think timing is important.
So, if the board does have questions after today, that you should think of after the group leaves, send those to Dr. Hebert, and he'll get answers for you, okay? Before you, before we bring it back to the board.
I can see them coming to, you know, forces and talking about what we have with expanding the education. But also, says, hearing things from you might help us, we're talking about drug programs and stuff.
Absolutely. Very open to, yeah, meeting needs.
Heart of the nation.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Livestream. Oh, it's there, they can take it off, or, if you want to turn the mic or...
No, I'll just have one if I need to take some audio.
No, no, they, they download it.
I would like to introduce to you Kristen Hopper, I have to look at, I have to have all these different titles, Associate Vice President of Child Integrated Services. This is Kristen. And then Mary Ann Busaka, who is Associate Vice President of Citrus County for Livestream. And they are here to present, to give you some information about the services that Livestream has to offer, where they are, you know, right now, since they've become the community-based provider, and to answer any questions that you have. Okay? Thank you.
Good afternoon. So, I wanted to give all of you an update. So, as you know, we are now your community partner, doing community outpatient services. We're hoping to expand our CSU, we're talking with Citrus Memorial Hospital about doing a small 10-bed CSU for Baker Act. But we've been providing services in La Canto since October. Those were more specialized programs for adults, that was the family intensive therapy team, and also family intervention services. Both of those programs have to do with child welfare, so those are for parents that are involved in either the dependency courts or with the diversion programs like with the CPIs, with Department of Children and Families. So, in January, we began actually opening up and seeing adults with the transition from the centers that were receiving services there that were, either had no insurance or were underinsured. So, that included substance abuse outpatient services, as well as mental health outpatient services, and adult psychiatric services on an outpatient level. We are expanding our adult services as well as our children's services. We have been talking with Dr. Hebert and Kit, and proposing an MOU agreement. And so, part of that is with the C-COS program, with seeing children in each of the schools and placing a provider, a therapist, in each of your schools, based on your assessments with the tier, right? Okay, sorry, long day. And so, I wanted to give it over to Kristen, because she is part of our integration, and talk to you more specifically what we do regarding children's services. As you know, we have the CAT team as well, I'm sorry. So, I'll introduce you to Kristen.
Hi, thank you for having us today. So, I am over all of our children's clinical services with just in general with Livestream, so, and I serve all of Lake and Sumter County, some of Marion County, and now some of the services that are in Citrus County now. So, with our CAT team, I oversee that team in Lake and Sumter, and now that we've expanded out in Citrus County and Hernando. So, if you're not familiar with CAT, we are the Community Action Team, it's an intensive in-home therapeutic program for some of our kids and our families with the intensive malhealth and behavioral health issues. So, that's kind of like a higher level of intensive program that we offer in-home. We have clinicians, case managers, advocates that work with our, or mentors, work with our kids and the families. So, it's a whole wrapped-up program for our families and our kids. We take referrals from dependency, from DJJ, from communities, from schools for those programs. So, we're up and running, ready to go in Citrus and Hernando County. We have office already set up in Brooksville, and we do have location in La Canto, but we are, right now, getting a location right in Inverness, too, so we'll put some of our team right there. We are rolling out our mobile response team for Lake Sumter and Citrus, so we're really excited, we're launching this Friday. So, we will be getting out that information very quickly to everybody, and anybody can access this mobile response team, schools, law enforcement, DJJ, community, everybody. So, I've been doing a lot of meetings with, both with Ms. Humbah and the schools and with every county to get this information out. This will be a wonderful resource for folks to call if they're just in need of assistance with, with their, with their kids, we're serving 0 to 25. So, we're hoping to target the substance abuse population as well. But the goal of the mobile response team is to lessen the need for a Baker Act or an arrest. We really want to divert from having, you know, everybody going to a Baker Act facility or a jail. So, we are seeing such a high rate of kids and adults coming onto our Baker Act units. I monitor all of the kids that come through the Baker Act facility each and every day, and we have such a high rate of numbers of them coming in, it's just astronomical. So, we're very excited, we're going to have clinicians, case managers, and peer recovery specialists on our team, serving each of those counties, 24/7, on-demand services. What else am I missing? Oh, so we also have our Yoffre program, which is the Youth and Family Recovery Program, that's another in-home program that we work with our families for youth that are involved with drugs and alcohol. So, we can get referrals from everywhere, as all schools, DJJ, and we will be getting that started here very shortly, they'll be located in our Inverness office, but we can serve all of Citrus County. We also have J-Task, which is our treatment alternative program for safer communities, and those are our kids who have been in DJJ, are already in DJJ services right now, where we provide assessment services for mental health, substance abuse, where we get in there and provide assessments so we can get them wrapped in services. And that's been going on already, so. You guys have any other...
Your, your mobile response unit, which is, really sounds exciting. I mean, it really, for us, I can see where that could have a real positive impact.
Right.
Are you, have you, have you started to have conversations with the sheriff's office, with the SRO department? Because for our schools, with Baker Acts, that may also come into play. Kids' team is amazing.
Yeah, it's wonderful, yeah.
So, I know that, but that's another piece of how you will fit into their assisting now.
No, and I know it's going to be very different for this county. Each county's been very different with my conversations, because we want to be very supportive of how each county, how each school, how every SRO does their, their thing, especially with the mental health plans that each school has. So, I've been meeting with all the different SROs for each county, and I have the contact information for, for this school district and for law enforcement and everybody. So, I will, I will be meeting with them to find out how we can be supportive. It's voluntary, we're not trying to come and say, you have to call us, this is what you have to do. We just want to be a help, another resource for people to call us. We've been really clear with everybody that we've been meeting with, if you don't, really, you know, the, the big piece of the program is to help you not have to do a Baker Act, but if you're just not quite sure if you should call us or not, please call us, so we can help navigate whatever the situation is, help navigate through services. My phone number was put out there pretty early on when we did our initial press release. And so, I've been getting a lot of calls, which have been really great, actually, because we've been able to navigate some of the current concerns that are going on in the community, a lot of our families just not sure what kind of services they need, not quite sure what kind of help they need, and we've been able to do a lot of triaging and getting people connected. I got a phone call on Saturday night from grandparents who are raising their grandson, and they just feel like they just don't know what to do, don't know how to reach out, we're able to navigate and get them connected. We're able to navigate and get them connected to CAT services, and kinship services as well. So, we're going to get the whole family wrapped into services. So, I feel like we're going to get a lot of calls like that, helping people kind of get connected. It's going to be great for us to be able to partner with all of our other folks here in the community here. It was great for us to hear all of our other folks here, so we then know, well, if we can't serve them through Livestream, we, we're going to help them find other folks that they can be served through. Our whole goal is to keep them connected and have that warm handoff. When we do respond to an emergency or a crisis, our goal is to help maintain them and get them stabilized and keep them safe, do safety planning, but we don't stop there. We're going to work to enroll them into services or find out who they're already enrolled with, so we can then partner and continue treatment, and make sure that they're safe. We've done treatment planning, everything, got the whole support system going on, and then do that warm handoff as well. So, again, if we can't, for some reason, provide their treatment by their, by their choosing or whatever, we'll do that warm handoff to somebody that can. These services are no cost to the family. We don't charge for mobile response, for Yoffer, J-Task. The only program really that we look at insurance is the CAT team, but it's pretty rare if we can't serve that family. We do have a slightly skewed fee scale, but we do have funding through our Lutheran services to help serve our families. I throw a lot out there, and I tend to do that, so. What can I answer for you?
How many people do you see working at Citrus County?
For the mobile response, or just in general?
General.
General. So, for mobile response, I'm going to kind of go through that. How many do you have on the CAT team? For mobile response, we're going to have at least six per team. That doesn't mean it's just going to be that team. We have Sumter County team that are coming in and out of the county to help if we need to. We've got, I'm sorry, I don't have all the numbers in my head today. How many do we have on the CAT team, do you know?
Answer.
Yeah. I think there's three or four clinicians, but then there's also, we have, I want to say there's the same amount of case managers. I can get that information to you and send that on your way down. Let me get these right, because they're guessing.
And they're, and they're training with all these people? What is the training?
For mobile response, they're actively in training with us right now. Actually, they're, they're right now doing an actual crisis training. We've been doing face-to-face crisis training, trauma-informed training, just any motivational interviewing training. So, we have folks at our agency that are doing one-to-one with them, so that we're very confident that they're going to be able to handle any type of call that we get.
And the clinicians, are they like a master's degree?
Their master's degree, licensed, registered or licensed, all the supervisors, including myself, are all licensed clinicians.
So, do other counties, school districts use the mobile response team in the schools?
We have partnered with Lake County and Sumter, and they are going to add us as a part of their mental health plan. So, what they're going to do is, whatever they have on their plan, they're going to reach out to whatever resources they have already, whether it be C-CAWS or whatever they've decided to use in their school. And if it's gotten to a point where it may rise to a level of a Baker Act, or that they've tried all their resources already, then they're going to contact mobile response. I'm a part of a lot of their staffings already with some of the kids that they're concerned about. So, hopefully, not getting to a, a point of a Baker Act, we're able to kind of get in, staff some of the cases of the kids that they're concerned about, and get in services in a little bit more quickly. But we are a part of their, of their plan already. So, if they feel like they need to call us, they can.
What are the ages of the children, Baker Act children, usually?
For our mobile response, or just in general?
Just Baker Act.
Gosh, we take them all the way up to 18 in our facility for the children's unit, and then up and beyond for the adult facility.
What's the most frequent age, what?
We have, right now, is the pre-teenage. We have had younger, age five and up, five and six-year-olds, but we have a lot of 13, 14-year-olds on our unit right now. And we monitor where they're coming from, too. So, for example, we're really looking at, a couple years ago with the South Lake area, when we had a lot of suicides happening, we're really looking at those different areas and monitoring what's happening. Are they coming from school? Are they coming from home? We monitor if they're coming from DJJ, too. Because if we're assessing them on the unit, if they have a high risk, then we're doing assessments really quickly as well, to make sure we get them wrapped in services.
Okay.
I actually do all the suicide sign-offs as well for those.
So, will Livestream be getting with the district to do an MOU? I mean, what, what are we working on?
Well, we can.
We've heard centers here.
Right.
You heard, you were here for that, right?
Mm-hmm.
And obviously, are there any issues that you have with that?
Say that one more time, I'm sorry.
Does your organization have any issues with how we operate in with the centers?
No, not at all. No, we'll partner, we'll be partnering with them. And I, and yeah, Mary and I know a secret deal, so we work with them before, so.
So, then, are you all going to be able to offer more services at our other schools, then?
Absolutely. And we want to get, as soon as we get that MOU done, it's with our, with our CEO now, so we'll let him deal with the, the finance part. But we want to get, we're ready to get in there and start providing services. Like, the more providers we can get in there, the better, because there's a lot of kids that would need, a lot of families would need. So, but we're ready to go as soon as our CEO is doing his thing, so.
Two gentlemen that came to our, our Southern meeting with the commissioners and the city councils indicated that they might be putting counselors in, in all of our schools. And my question to them was the communication, because so many times, especially for the Baker Acts, we don't get any communication. So, he kind of went over those heifer rules, but he said, you will tell us and the teachers so they can help.
Oh, absolutely. So, with Senate Bill 7026, under the Threat Assessment Team portion in the statute, that allows us to provide you with the information you need for any student or youth that's been Baker acted to our facility. So, I monitor every, I, I check our status all day long, every morning and every afternoon. And so, I'll send Ms. Humble an email, let her know if we have any youth from your district in our Baker Act facility. So, if those are students that you're monitoring through any of your meetings or your Threat Assessment Team, I can share that information with you. I can be a part of your staffings, if you like, or making recommendations, if you'd like. And that's why I do something with Sumter County right now.
And then the discussion of a Baker Act, especially in our schools, is, is between the SRO and, and your counselor.
Whoever you want to be a part of.
The ultimate thing, that SRO still has to do it, right? Is that right, Doug?
That's what you guys choose.
Law enforcement.
Our medical. Our medical. So, each, each district is choosing how they want to do that part. We will, we will have that discussion with whoever you choose to have that discussion with. We can provide it, because it is your child on our unit, and if you're monitoring them through your Threat Assessment Team, or however you have that set up, we can have that discussion. And I can provide you the information.
Even if, for clarification, even if the student's not Baker acted during the school day?
Correct.
That's, that's been sometimes our issue.
Correct.
And Ms. Humble has told us, I mean, that's, that's stuff we should be in the half.
The language is very clear on, under the Threat Assessment Team language in the statute, that we can provide you that information. It doesn't matter when they've been Baker acted, it doesn't have to be during the school day, it's still your child in your district. So, depends on what you, and for example, Lake County will have their, they call it their CAT meeting, or their Threat Assessment meeting, and they want to do a re-entry meeting. So, any child that we have, I let them know if they haven't already been told. I know law enforcement will probably notify you if they do it, the Baker Act. Sometimes, as the kids are Baker acted by the, at evening time, maybe it was a voluntary Baker Act by the family, or I mean, you're not always going to know unless I notify you.
Right.
So, yeah. So, if I know about the Baker Act, I'm going to let you know. If I don't know, I usually have to wait till, and they come out of county, I have to, hopefully somebody will notify me, so we can have that conversation.
We're, we're saying Baker Act, but if I recall, there's a difference between a screening, here's another one if you need it.
Sorry.
No, no, you go right ahead.
There's a lot, so.
Are we saying data that's, because there's Baker Act screenings, or, or they're Baker active, but then they get to you, and then they may not be, you may not continue to keep them, is that?
So, what my responsibility through integration as a whole is making sure, no matter what, I don't, I don't care if they're in my county or not, if I know about that child being Baker acted within a county we serve, it is my responsibility to make sure we set up a staffy. And I know staffing means something different than to the schools, I learned that lesson. Staffing to us means multi-disciplinary team. We need to know that this child is going to get the services that they need, wherever they actually live, and the family, too. So, I run staffings non-stop, because we need to know wherever this child's going to be. So, that's important for us to know what school they're at. So, when we get a Baker, the evaluators at the hospital need to ask where that child's school is. So, then we can contact you and say, hey, we're going to get you on a call, whoever your representative is. So, we know, we need a partner with you, your child's here, what services do they already have, what can we get them involved in, so we, we can stop this cycle. Because kids are falling through the packs, we all know this. With the conversation we just heard with Sermy, we're getting kids to that level. Can we stop getting them to that level, and get intervention in right away? We're seeing five and six-year-olds coming onto the unit, that destroys us all. So, if we can get intervention in faster, that's our goal. So, if we can partner with our providers, with like centers and, you know, Ecker and everybody else going in, that's even better. So, if we know, if, for example, a child comes onto our unit for whatever reason, but they're already being served to the centers, we're going to call the centers. Hey, we got your kid, let's get in the staffing, and see what else we can do for this child and this family.
Mobile Response Unit?
Yeah.
They may not get Baker acted, then, at that point?
Potentially not.
And they may not be during the school day, too?
Correct.
Is that information that somehow, so that, again, there's coordination services?
Correct. So, that, so that child, we, again, we need to know where they're going to school, because then we can provide that information to the school. Whether or not they've been Baker acted or not, that information is valuable to us, because we need to know who is connected to that child. School is very important, because that is a support system for that child. It could be a very safe place for that child. So, we need them involved in whatever safety planning, treatment planning that we're, we're doing with that family. So, as soon as we have that situation safe and stabilized, that's when our case managers and everybody jumps in and starts working to get everybody involved in that child's treatment plan. So, then we were looking for who's involved through the school, who's involved, do they already have a clinician, maybe they have centers in already, maybe they already have C-CAWS in or CAT. Whoever it is, that's what we're looking for, so we can get everybody involved. So, I know it sounds like big dreams, but we're truly trying. I'm on a mission, so. But these kids are getting dropped, and we have families that hop the counties all the time. So, that's another thing. And you mentioned communication, that's a huge problem. So, within the state, integration is happening. So, we have a huge state initiative to make sure we are integrating, no matter what county these kids are in, we're following them. So, that's another thing I monitor as well. So, Livestream became the pilot agency to do this. And so, now, all the other agencies within the state are following our lead. So, we document everything, we follow our kids, so we usually know where they're going, hopefully, that your parents aren't falling off the face of the earth, but we follow where all these kids go. So, if they go into another county, we're going to follow right and find out where they're going, and so that either we continue to serve, or we find a provider that can serve them in the other county.
So, you're obviously working with the sheriff's office, too, right? Because there's, and that communication process.
Citrus is a little different, because they're not used to us yet. Lake and Sumter know us really well, so Citrus is the one where we're trying to make that relationship with them a little bit more. So, that's what I'm working on right now, but, so, unless anybody has it in for me.
When you say law enforcement, you talk to you about our SROs that are in our school.
Yeah, so all of that, because we're going to need to really work with SROs, and then also with law enforcement, because SROs could certainly definitely be a different goal, because each, each school is set up differently as well on how SROs function, too. So, with, like, for example, Lake County, SROs are incorporated into that Threat Assessment. So, the call to us may not necessarily come from an SRO, it may come from the actual guidance counselor or the social worker there. Sumter, that call is probably going to come from the SRO. So, it just depends on how you, as a, as a district, want to set that up. It doesn't.
Is that something, Kit, you'll be doing with them and coordinating?
Well, yes, but. It's a, I mean, it, like Kristin said, every district does it a little bit differently. For example, Lake County and Sumter County call what we call like a Baker Act and a Problem Solving Team, and like when we do our follow-up and all of those things, a Problem Solving Team. They refer to everything as a Threat Assessment. So, if someone is even a threat to themselves, they call it a Threat Assessment, they have a Threat Assessment Team, blah, 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 which we don't refer to it as that. Threat Assessment with us is, it's a threat, you know, like to harm others, you know, do something maybe catastrophic or making threats, you know, to a school, et cetera. So, our Problem Solving Team is what we go by. But now, what Kristin is talking about is some schools, if a student is in that crisis, or they're going to be Baker acted, then the SRO will call, like Livestream's, Livestream, to get that information to them. So, some do that, some don't do that. Where we are right now is that it's in statute that law enforcement only has to take, transport a Baker Act to the closest or the nearest facility. So, for us, the way that it is happening currently is that pretty much all of our Baker Acts here are taken to Ocala. So, what Kristin is referring to is if, for example, there's a child, let's say that gets Baker acted, that's receiving services from Livestream, then it may take two or three days before Kristin can get everything assessed to get services put in place for that child. If they're at the centers and they, they, you know, they're not with Livestream, because of the differences with that, you know, let's say they're with the centers as a provider, then that's who would be like with the wraparound services for them. So, because many of ours, at first, when they're Baker acted, aren't necessarily under someone's supervision, like the centers or Livestream, and with them being the community-based provider, we would want as many of our students to go to Leesburg as possible, because the services could start right away if they were not having another provider.
So, I was just, but when our CSU is set up in Citrus, that'll be us as well, so then we can go ahead and do that staffing right away, if they're.
If they're, yes. And when they have that, when that's finished at Citrus Memorial, where the plan is to have at least, you know, 10 beds for the, for the children, then that will, that will be awesome, because it will be here. But currently, that is what happens, is the students, most all of them are taken to Ocala. And it's been my understanding from some of the meetings is that there's not a lot of, I don't want to even say flexibility, but there hasn't been much focus on trying to get as many of the students to Lake County as possible. It's just pretty much automatic that they go to Ocala.
Wow, because the law states that they can take them to the closest.
To the closest facility.
But it doesn't, Doug, doesn't mandate?
No, it's not mandated.
I mean, you would just think that, that if, if now Livest, yeah, I, I mean, the obvious.
So, we're, that's something that we're working on. I've, I've talked with.
And I know you all in the room are the ones that are, that are the issue on that.
Right, and I'm, I'm trying to gather a few facts. Hopefully, it's going to, you know.
Because I can see a kid stuck in Ocala.
All kind of eaten the middle when that facility gets here, and, yeah.
So, our VP, Rick Hankey, has been working with law enforcement, so when they, when they're going to a hospital, to have them transported to, to our Livestream facility, and that we have the actual transportation piece set up. So, I know Rick is working on that. That we are working very quickly to get that 10-bed unit up at Citrus Memorial.
Is there a, a rough ETA? And I'm not trying to hold you to it, I'm just trying to help. I mean, is it going to be this school year, is?
I know, I, I know they, he told me it's very quickly, so I'll have to get that timeframe for you.
You get it, Kit.
Yeah, I will. And then, we are looking to build our own facility, that's going to have a larger unit for both adults and children, and include a residential building, so emulate everything that we've got going on in Lake and Sumter, and have that all up here, so in the long term, so.
Ms. Humble, the one part that I don't know that I, I got, and I, so that was very helpful when you shared, but I thought what they were describing had to do with when there was a, a situation on campus, and I'm thinking, we'll just use the elementary student. They're an elementary student, acting out the typical interventions that are trying to take place, are not working. And the question is, is at that point, who makes a call to the Mobile Response Unit? Does the sheriff, you know, does the SRO make that call? Is that something? Because it sounds like what you're saying is, in some cases... Is that something, because it sounds like what you're saying is in some counties, the SRO will make it, in other counties, the guidance counselor or somebody may make it.
That's true. So it's.
And that, and that's what I'm saying, is there a reason? And it's not an answer for today, but I'm wondering, is there, is there a better scenario for us?
Well, something just to kind of think about though is that if there's a 60-minute.
Window for us.
Window to come. So I, I think that is something that is going to spark conversation, that it's going to have to be determined if there is a child that is like you just felt like you just really could not wait 60 minutes.
Just somebody call us.
Right. Then, you know, it may be where if it is like just an absolute crisis and something needs to be done where an SRO would need to initiate that right away.
Got it.
I think that is the type of, of conversation and decision, you know, that we would have to make together.
That helps.
No matter who's gonna call us, we're gonna respond and answer.
Right.
The ones who are, and there are gonna be situations where, you know, the, the team has discussed a case and they're not quite sure what to do. So they'll call us and that could be somebody that they've, they've nominated to make that call or made, you know, the caller. But any emergent situation, anybody call.
Well, remember, do you have anything else?
I will get the numbers and the other information in our release of our number to you all and our.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item is the budget update, but we really don't have any new information to share with you that we had.
But Tammy came back twice.
If you have any questions for Tammy, but there's been no, we don't have anything out on the House of the Senate. We have the governor's budget, which we shared with you already. And we started our process with our staff. Tammy met with some department heads and they are working on their zero-based budget.
We think so.
If you don't have any questions, we'll go ahead and let this swing cover the job description and then I know you've got a long day.
Thank God we met with this swing yesterday. We'd sort of know what this is. Thank you for doing that.
You're, you are welcome. Good afternoon. I am here to present the guardian job description. It's, the title is school safety guardian job description. And I will go through just briefly our plan. We are looking at once, if, if at all, we post this position, once the job description is approved and we decide on salary, the process would be that we would have people apply for the guardian position. They would go through an interview process. They would go through background screenings that would be determined, as you can see in the qualifications, that they would be required to hold their concealed weapons permit. If they do not have those pieces up through passing the background and obtaining or having the concealed weapons permit, then they would be disqualified from employment for that position. If they make it through that process, they would, our plan would be to hire them or we're looking at hiring them as a long-term support sub. The cost per hour would be $8.46, which is what we pay our support subs. And that would just be for training purposes. They would not be in our schools at this time. They would just be participating in the 144-hour training process. If they make it through the training process at different stages, if they are unable to complete that, then they would be dismissed at that time. They could continue to be a support sub, but they would be dismissed from being able to be hired at that time. If they do make it through the 144-hour training along with all of our other qualifications, then they would be hired at that time as a school safety guardian. As you can see, we have the knowledge and skills, which we did take those pieces from other, we looked at seven other districts that have the job description in place and we took those pieces from those job descriptions. And the qualifications, they have those qualifications are standard for the other job descriptions. This position would report to the chief of police, which is Mr. Grant. The job goal is there. There would, and I wanna point out one thing, we have highlighted it and underlined this sentence, there shall be no law enforcement authority except to the extent necessary to prevent or abate an active assailant incident on school property. So they would not replace our SROs. They would be there with our SROs, working together and collaborating with our school resource officers. On the second page, there are the performance responsibilities. I have updated that since yesterday, so everything that we had addressed individually is there.
You skipped supervisors. I thought Mr. Grant would be a supervisor.
Supervisors, they will, the guardians will not supervise anyone. On the first page, reports to chief, chief of police, but they will not be, I'm sorry, it should say supervisors. I will make that correction. Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out. So we will make that correction to supervisors. They will not supervise anyone. The performance responsibilities are as listed in the, under, or in the, that section. Any questions regarding that or the job description?
I don't know whether we answered yesterday or not, but when they're going through the physical, psychiatric and drug tests, who's paying for that? Also them?
The background and drug test is the person applying for the position. We would have to discuss for the psychiatric test and make a decision on that.
So they would, they would pay for that?
They would pay for, right now, all of our applicants pay for background and drug screening, so we would talk about this. The, that's a great question and I will notate that, that we need to discuss that with regards to the psychiatric.
One of the questions, did anybody board before I asked my, I wanted to give you guys a. One of the questions I brought up yesterday was how we could potentially take advantage of someone that had years of service? If they were military, former military, if they were former law enforcement, they came down here, they said, hey, I just retired from 20 years on the force. How, shouldn't I get credit for some of that? It sounded like, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, if it, if it was instead a professional technical?
If, this would be a classified position as of right now. We've designed it to be classified, zero, one, non-union, oh, one, which would be 1755 an hour. Classified personnel do not receive any experience unless they currently worked for Citrus County Schools.
So if the position though then was professional technical?
They could bring in up to five years.
Which would at least give the potential of, of us maybe attracting somebody and doing that. Now, I, I grant, I realize it's more paid, but on the other hand, hopefully they're bring, you know, that they're qualified and they bring more experience.
If, yes, the superintendent can determine if that, we have not allowed classified, but the superintendent can make that determination. It would, they have the fill area.
She declared that it's a hard to fill area and award up to five years.
Oh, she can without having to, to do that? Okay. Because that, that's really my concern is just how we can provide years of service because I would think that should mean something.
We should, we don't wanna provide this position with any more years of service than we provide our teachers. I mean, we have plenty.
We give the teachers up to five years.
Yeah, but I mean, a 20-year teacher coming down from Pennsylvania doesn't get 20 years as.
They receive 18.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am. But, well, they, I was gonna say, they can receive up to 18 though.
As long as they're not retired. I mean, they're already getting paid for those years.
Actually, I was gonna say, professional technical actually gets less than a T, than some of our teachers.
Correct. Classified with starts, they do not receive any years unless they previously worked for the district. Professional technical may bring up to five years in that related field. Teachers receive up to 18 years. And Ms. Roberts, correct, unless they have, were receiving a retirement benefit from another district or another state, they can bring in zero. And our teachers that retire can bring in five years.
Right, so actually, they, I mean, just for clarification, they actually would get less than my teachers get?
Yeah.
Years, years wise.
Years wise.
Yeah.
And, and I'm just saying, they are potentially taking a bullet for our instructors.
I also brought that up. We'll go back with this.
I'm sorry.
I also brought, I also had that same concern. You know, the 1755 an hour is the non-union ones.
Classified, yes, zero, one, yes, sir.
And then if they get five years, it would go to 1930 is what you all told us.
Yes.
I looked it down. So if, what Mr. Kennedy said though, if it was changed to professional technical, is it still a 1755 an hour?
No, sir, we would have to look at the specific area, the specific level that we would want to place them at, and that ranges from.
New chart.
Like, an 11-month employee, starting at, if it was, and I have this because we use this chart for nurses, they would, it would be 33,160. I did not figure it by hour, but that's roughly 3,000 more than we share classified, zero, one. It would be 33,160. And at a level one classification, these are again, non-union, it would be 36,694. So roughly 6,000, 65 to 7,000 more than the non-classified zero.
Which is roughly about 2,000 less than a first-year teacher.
Next year it will be 38,400.
Next for next year.
Yes.
For five-year though, for five-year experience, is that right?
No, no, that's starting.
That's starting. That would be with.
So you would actually.
Okay, for professional.
With five years, it would be. 30, it would be 30, I apologize, I'm looking at the, I was looking at the tier two. For level four, it would be 33,000. And for five years, it would be 38,000. For 11 months, oh, one, it would be 39,000. So it would be 40,000. With five years, it would be 44,000 for 11-month employee.
Under professional technical?
Under professional technical.
But the other one you just gave me, the non-union support was 30,466 is what you all had said.
That is for classified. Is that for classified?
Yes.
Yes. So professional technical, that salary is higher. Either if we started them out at level four, they would start at 33,000 for 11-month. And for level one, they would start out at 39,000 for a level.
What if level three? Because I don't have it in front of me.
Level three, I do not have that.
Okay.
I, we, I, we can look at that. It would fall between there.
I, I'm thinking if we're trying to get closer to the other, but then give the availability of the five years, that's really what I was.
And we can pull that. I just pulled nurses because they were 11 months. So it got pretty close up. And I can figure if you'd like to look.
I was actually looking to see if I had it online here.
I think that if we, you know, I strongly feel that we should recognize some years of service for, you know, if we had a retired law enforcement officer, retired military persons coming into the county that is just retired and wants this type of job, is trained and, you know, is qualified in a lot of ways, you know, I'd like to see us be able to have that pay scale that we can give them up to five years.
And this is just so you know, how we came to the, to the conclusion or decision at looking at classified, non-union, level one, is because when we looked at the other districts that with the job description, there, we looked at beginning teacher salary, just to kind of get an idea, and they pay their, we pay our teachers 91% of what they pay their teachers in those surrounding counties. And so 91% of what they were paying, those counties were paying their guardians, what roughly came out to 17, between 17. Correct. Starting salary, yes, sir, between 17 and 18 dollars an hour.
So there's a mechanism in place by which we can get the five years, I believe. Because it's a hard to fill area, I think you'd justify it to be a hard to fill area.
I, I would think it's going to.
It's a new job. It's not like you're gonna.
If we, for some reason, found we needed to change that to have more flex, is there, is that a process? I mean, what, what's that process look like if we found, or I guess maybe you don't need to change it if you're, if you hired everybody? So as long as it's still a difficult, what deter, what, what's, what criteria do they have to use to?
It really doesn't say, it's just a superintendent.
It's a, if there's a hard to fill area, that is, yes.
We're looking at one per school, so 22?
That has not been determined as of yet, my understanding. I think we're just preparing the job description and then we will.
We're just trying to get ready so that if something changes in the law and it just goes into place, we have one big hurdle out of the way. For me to tell you, based on the budget now, there's not 22 guardians filled into that budget by any stretch of imagination.
Oh, not with the funding.
So, but I, I don't know what's gonna come out.
I want one in every school and two in some, to say.
As long as they work for nothing, I'll hire them.
An SRO who's working now and decided, well, you know, he didn't afford, he was always an SRO, could he come over and just by having been an SRO, would he fulfill all these requirements here?
Most, most likely he would. He still has to get through the training though, according to the law.
Well, that's what I want to ask.
My daughter's a deputy, I'm Doug's deputy, and she wants to carry a, she still has to get a weapons permit. She, she could go through the same classes.
You get concealed?
You do to get a concealed weapon.
That's crazy.
Yeah, that was interesting to learn. I didn't realize that, Doug, I mean, it's interesting. And, and these, we're talking about their, their how many days? Their 11-month?
Two 17.
Two 17, thank you. That was great.
Because of the training piece, we felt like there's got to be some training and then we also have some summer school things and we just felt.
We could, we could flex a little bit and have them.
Right, they're not a 12-month, they're not a 10-month.
Correct.
11-month, Doug, it's been that.
That would help with our training.
I purpose this all by saying that unless there's changes in the legislation, this is really a viewpoint that we feel like it's prudent on our part to not sit back and wait, right? To get, be poised to move if we get that opportunity to do so.
Well, when, when school districts are getting criticized for not doing stuff, and here we are trying to be proactive, it's appropriate.
And on the flip side, yes, if a person who's, who's all these requirements and then it's, I think I'll be an SRO, and then go over and be an SRO and then fulfill the whole.
Got a good whole other training.
Oh, exactly.
Otherwise, they gotta go through the whole thing again.
There's a comprehensive test they have to take and, and it's not just an application.
And I think, I think I saw, and I sent a copy of it to snatch up to see, I think the Nellis County was the one that got a grant from the Department of Justice. So there's, there might be money outside.
We will look into that.
Yeah.
Anything else that we're needing to, that you need feedback for else on it?
No, sir, just if you have any other questions or anything we need to address.
One in every school, two in some.
We're gonna, so you're gonna bring this back to the ward? Yeah, it hasn't been.
Yes, sir. Yes, we will bring it back to the March 12 board meeting for approval.
And at that time though, you will have a salary scale on there, right?
Yes, sir. Yes, we will attach a salary scale and it will be exactly what I shared.
Hearing that they want to be able to get those five.
Yes, sir.
Get rid of that.
Yes. All right, thank you.
Just gonna add one more thing I should have brought up earlier, but I forgot. The kids marathon is Friday.
Oh, that's right, thank you.
That's our elementary.
And I'm gonna be a senior champ, so I apologize, I won't be there.
Uh, Scott, what time is that? It's the six o'clock?
Yeah.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock at the Kanto.
Yes. You know, it's all relatively quick event, but we can use your help passing out medals if any of you come.
Please be there.